Good evening and welcome to the Carnegie Town Hall. This meeting of the City Planning Commission will begin with a few introductory remarks. The City of Sioux Falls Planning Commission serves as an advisory board to the City Council. It is the responsibility of the Planning Commission to consider and make recommendations on land use and zoning matters. Actions taken tonight on conditional use permits are final unless appealed to the City Council in writing within five days. And any actions taken tonight on final development plans, design review, or minor amendments are final. Any recommendations made on preliminary subdivision plan requests tonight will be referred to the City Council for final action at the third council meeting of this month, or at the first council meeting of next month if associated with a rezoning or major amendment. Any recommendations made on zoning requests, major amendments, future land use amendments, or ordinance amendments tonight will be referred to the City Council for final action at the first council meeting of next month. Council meetings are held at 7:00 PM here in the Carnegie Town Hall and are televised. The Planning Commission will first approve the consent agenda and then the regular agenda. In order to place certain non-controversial items on the Commission's consent agenda, planning staff in the Planning Commission apply the following criteria. First, the request conforms with the Shape Sioux Falls 2035 Comprehensive Plan. Second, planning staff recommends approval of the request. Third, there are no audience members present or written comments received in opposition to the request. And fourth, the application meets all conditions and requirements of the Sioux Falls zoning ordinance. For the regular agenda, the following normal public hearing procedure will be followed for each item. By first requesting planning staff to present a brief report on that item, second, the petitioner or representative will be requested to come forward to make a statement or answer questions. After the petitioner has spoken, anyone from the audience who wishes to address the agenda item shall be recognized. Then, the Planning Commission will discuss the matter further and take appropriate action. We ask that anyone addressing the Planning Commission move to the podium microphone, identify themselves for the record. Please limit your comments to less than five minutes. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight, we ask you that you please either turn off or silence your electronic devices. This meeting is being televised on Channel 16 and will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 AM, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, and Wednesday at 1:00 AM. Thank you for your cooperation.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the March Planning Commission. I'm going to start by reading the consent agenda. Item number one is approval of the February 2nd, 2011 minutes of the regular meeting. Item number two is Platts. Item number three is a rezone from the C2 General Commercial District to the C3 Central Business District for allowed uses at 700 North Main Avenue. Item number four is a conditional use permit in the I-1 Light Industrial District to allow off-site accessory parking at 4400 and 4402 North National Avenue and 4401 North Sherbert Avenue. Item number five is a conditional use permit in the I-1 Light Industrial District to allow accessory off-site parking at Algonkin Industrial Avenue. Item number six is a final development plan in the subarea F of the Dolly Farm Village Plan Development District to construct a restaurant at 1010 South Highline Place. Item number seven is a minor amendment in subarea A at the Village at Heather Ridge Plan Development District to amend the previously approved final development plan to allow a patio expansion at 6211 South Old Village Place. Item number eight is an ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls correcting clerical errors in certain zoning ordinances. Are there any objections from the audience on anything on the consent agenda? No? Staff?
I did want to note, Madam Chair, good evening. And my name is Dave Loveland and I'm representing planning staff tonight. Item number seven, we've received a request, which is the minor amendment for Village at Heather Ridge to defer that for one month to the April 6th Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Is there a motion then to approve the consent agenda with the deferral of item number seven?
I move to approve with the deferral of item number seven.
I'll second. Okay. There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the regular agenda? We'll take a minute here and anybody that was on the consent, you are free to leave tonight. Thank you.
Good evening again. Before you approve the regular agenda, we did want to let you know that we did receive a request from the applicant of number, item number nine, to withdraw their petition.
Okay. Thank you, Dave. Okay. Is there a motion to approve the irregular agenda with, item number nine withdrawn?
I'd move to approve the regular agenda, minus number nine.
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. Item carries. Item number 10.
Good evening again. Item number 10 is a major amendment to subarea B of the 69th Street and Louise Avenue Plan Development District to add hotel motel as an allowed land use. The applicant's requesting this major amendment in order to construct a limited service hotel. The general location of the site is at 3400 West 69th Street, just to the west of the Louise Avenue and I-229 interchange. The area in question is just over two and a half acres in size and the site is currently vacant. Abutting zoning and land use to the north and to the south are corporate offices and office buildings, compatibility rating is a four. And to the east and west is both vacant land but zoned for office development. All of that is located in subarea B of the same planned development district, so it also has been assigned a compatibility rating of four. The 69th Street and Louise Avenue Plan Development District was created by City Council action in June of 1996 to develop a commercial and office park. Since its creation, the Planning Commission has approved numerous final development plans for construction of office buildings and commercial properties. Contained within the staff report, you'll see the changes that are proposed under allowed uses. You'll see that hotel motel has been added under signage. The applicant is requesting to allow perceived signage for the hotel use. And then, under other regulations, we did submit to you in your addendum packet an amended ordinance to add item D, which will allow hotel height to 60 feet. So, that's also for your consideration. As part of the application, currently, the setbacks are required as for the office district parking requirements will be required at five parking spaces plus one space per room or suite. And then, standard zoning ordinance regulations in regards to landscaping will also apply. And the applicant is requesting to incorporate a hotel motel which has been, at a site which has previously been limited to primarily office uses. The nature of a hotel motel is such that the impacts to surrounding properties will be negligible and extensive buffering or transitions will not be necessary. The applicant should take care to provide adequate and sufficient landscape and building design to incorporate the project into compatibility with surrounding land uses and structures. And the architectural site and landscaping plans will be evaluated in the future at the final development plan stage, which will come back before the Planning Commission for approval. The proposed use will be a limited service hotel and the applicants are not requesting additional land uses to incorporate banquet halls, restaurants, or alcohol sales. If any future requests for those uses are received, an additional major amendment will require Planning Commission review and City Council approval. And as I noted, the final development plan will require Planning Commission approval prior to construction and the applicant should be aware that provisions of the I-229 Design Review District may apply as they develop their site plans. But because the subject application conforms to the Shape Sioux Falls 2035 Comprehensive Plan and will not negatively impact surrounding properties, staff is recommending approval of the major amendment with the subarea regulations as noted above and amended per year addendum. And that concludes staff reports.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions of staff?
Thank you.
Dave, I just want clarification. We're going to vote to amend the ordinance first?
Yeah, you need to do a motion to approve and then a second for that, and then we need a motion to amend the ordinance to add the, to add the item D and the other regulations, and then a second. So, you'll take two votes on that then.
On item number 10 or on the ordinance itself?
On item number 10. So, you'll do the motion and then the motion to amend, and you do two separate approval votes then, so.
Okay. Whatever Dave said.
[laughing]
Okay. Is the petitioner here, please?
Raquel Blount, Lloyd Companies, 3130 West 57th Street, Suite 112. Here on behalf of the applicant and happy to answer any questions you have regarding this use.
Any questions for Raquel? No? Thank you, Raquel.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll look for Commission action on item number 10. Good luck.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion for approval.
Of item number 10?
Of item number 10.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Okay, now we need a motion for the amendment to the ordinance. Do I have that?
I'll move that we amend the ordinance.
Thank you.
And I will second that.
Thank you. Okay. All those in favor of item number 10 and the amendment to the ordinance signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed? Motion carries. All those in favor of whatever we're voting on, item number 10's amendment signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank goodness. Let's move on to item number 11. Glad we got that out of the way first.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Commissioners, my name is Steve Randall, representing planning staff on this and other items this evening. Item 11 is a conditional use permit application from the applicant Kurt Walter for Verizon Wireless. The owner of the property is Fred Nasser. The request is to allow a telecommunications tower and facility on the subject property to construct a new 100-foot galvanized stealth monopole and ground equipment shelter. Located at 121 Southwest Avenue, it's less than an acre in size, zoned light industrial. Currently, the existing land use of the subject parcel is vacant. It's tied in with adjacent developed parcels. The applicant has provided zoning and aerial vicinity maps, site plan, tower and equipment construction plans, and site photographs. Zoning in the vicinity to the north is I-1, as well as to the south and to the west. To the east, it's residential across this arterial street. Therefore, with the residential zoning, we give it a compatibility rating of three, which indicates the proposed use may have potential conflict with the residential use that could be remedied or minimized through project design. And looking at this vacant lot, the accessibility is going to be by easement. The applicant will negotiate the easement with the property owner, and I believe that those are being done. That would be a requirement for construction of the facility. Subject property is within 600 feet of Axstill Park Middle School, and we have a letter from the school administration indicating they have no problem with the subject application. The tower is shown as a 108-foot setback from the closest residential structure and 123 feet from the center line of Southwest Avenue. This conforms to the requirements of the conditional use regulations for telecommunications towers. Building location, our equipment building is located at the base of the tower inside a fenced area. And a landscaping plan is indicated in a addendum drawing. We show it as a revised drawing submitted on February 18th with landscaping between the improvements on the site and out to the street. The plan that they submitted actually shows landscaping to replace an existing concrete foundation work that's been removed, so staff is adding a stipulation that that landscaping extend out to the right-of-way of the street. They've also indicated the planning of one tree to replace a tree that is being removed to put in the equipment, and that's at staff's request. Because in maintaining design character of the neighborhood, we would like to maintain the existing landscaping features, which are one tree and landscape setback and the cross from residential development. They are screening the base of the tower with a wood fence, and that conforms to the requirements of additional use regulations and conditional use regulations for telecommunications So, the proposed use does have some visual conflict with existing nearby residential uses, but it's mitigated through the additional landscaping and screening of the base of the tower. The setback of the tower from the street is adequate, and staff is recommending approval with two conditions. That access easement lead to an existing street approach. There's two possibilities there. They show the one out to West Avenue, but the owner of the property is also talking to them about going south to East 10th Street. Whichever direction they go, they'll have to provide that easement to get their change of use. And the second condition being the size, or the side area disturbed or demolished during the tower base enclosure and street, between the tower base enclosure and the street is to be restored with dirt, grass lawn, and one two-and-a-half-inch caliber tree minimum, ash trees, species are not allowed. We've had no calls from the general neighborhood. The owner of the property did call and say that they were negotiating the location of the easement. And that concludes staff report.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions for Steve? No? Thank you, Steve. Is the petitioner here?
My name's Kurt Walter. I do represent Verizon Wireless in their ever-expanding coverage in Sioux Falls. I'd be here to answer any of your questions you might have tonight. I believe this particular location and this general vicinity fits our needs. It's industrial. It's as good as we can come up with in this particular area. Some of the pictures you might see, there's Land O' Lakes is right to the north of us. They've got some storage tanks that will be right next to our facility. We believe that this is a good spot for us. We have negotiated a non-specific easement with the property owner that allows us access from, to our facility from any right-of-way that occurs. This gives the landowner the opportunity to expand his building to the north over what you see here as what we're going to pave. So, currently, we are looking to pave and have the parking spots, go out to West Avenue there to an existing curb cut. That's what we're planning right now, but we do not have a specified easement that we're going to be able to record. It's a, it's a non-defined access, basically. And that's already been done. So, I'll be here to answer any questions, guys. My name is...
Any questions for Kurt? Thank you, Kurt.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll look for Commission action on item number 11.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion for approval with the two stipulations.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Motion second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed? Same sign. Item number 11 carries. Item number 12.
Item 12 is also a conditional use permit for a telecommunications tower and facility to be located at 700 East 3rd Street on the edge of the Whittier neighborhood. The applicant is Dan Dean, Buell Consulting for Verizon Wireless, and the owner is Jerry Johnson, Sioux Falls Two Way Radio. There is an existing tower on the subject property, a lattice tower freestanding, that would be replaced by the proposed tower, which is a stealth design. At 120-foot high, a galvanized stealth monopole and ground equipment shelter. It's less than an acre, zoned I-1 light industrial, and it's a developed area. To the north, there is light industrial zoning, as well as to the east and west. And to the south, we have RD Residential District, a compatibility rating of three. The compatibility rating indicates proposed use may have potential conflicts with existing adjacent uses but can be remedied or minimized through project design, similar to the previous There is a subject property within 600 feet that does have some concern, Falls Park, but we have a letter from the park that says that they have no objection to the proposed development. The developed site, it is a developed site with buildings, parking, and storage yard, and no substantial vegetation to be preserved, and nothing to be disturbed in the construction of the facility. Replacement of the tower will be at a further setback from, I should say, a farther setback from the street, and at the same height should have less of a visual impact on the neighborhood and into the park. Plan shows gravel surfacing and room for parking with access easement on adjacent property again, which is hard-surfaced out to East 3rd Street. Landscaping planning, plan is not proposed, and the visual quality of the site at the tower base in the neighborhood is unchanged by the backyard location. A change of use and permit will be required for that. The design character with its proposed stealth design is acceptable. Screening is a proposed wood fence at the base of the tower, and that is also acceptable. The applicant proposes that existing trees in the residential neighborhood are actually effective screening of public views to the tower, and staff has concurred with that The proposed monopole structure is designed to hold Verizon and at least one other wireless provider at 106-foot platform height, and the tower will also support the Sioux Falls two-way radio equipment at the top of the tower, which would be an antenna, a whip antenna. We believe that these are sufficiently screened in the neighborhood by existing trees and the separation distance to the new tower. Staff is recommending approval with one condition, that access easement be provided. And that concludes staff report.
Thank you. Any questions to Steve? No? Thank you, Steve. The petitioner, please?
Daniel Dean, Buell Consulting for Verizon Wireless, 2324 University Avenue West, St. Paul, Minnesota, 55114. And I'm here to answer any questions you might have about our proposal.
Any questions, Dan? Did you have any objections from the Whittier Resident Association?
No. Shortly after, they had a neighborhood meeting on the 15th, I contacted Gigi and she said there were no questions or concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Anybody from the audience have anything to add on this item? No? Thank you. Okay, I'll look for Commission action on item number 12.
Madam Chair, I'll move for approval of item 12 with the one condition. I'll second that.
Okay. Motion in second. Any discussion? No? All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed? Same sign. Item number 12 carries. Item number 13?
Item 13 is a conditional use permit application from the applicant Alizard Dimu, and the owner of the property is Carol Skilman. The request is to allow motor vehicle display and sales with an existing repair shop business. The repair shop has been there for some time on a lease arrangement. General location, 1013 North Garfield Avenue. It's less than an acre, C2 zoning, and a developed area. Zoning all around the property is C2 general commercial, however, some of the properties are being used for residential purposes. To the north and to the south, excuse me, to the west, to the south and to the east, it's, it is commercial uses. So, we have a compatibility rating of three in the neighborhood, which is a potential incompatibility. The potential conflicts can be remedied or minimized through project design. Traffic parking and other external effects should be directed away from these lower-intensity uses. Landscaping, buffering, and screening should be employed to minimize negative effects. There was a conditional use approved for the repair business that had a condition for approval that the backyard be screened or fenced so that they could have parking back there. The property back there was never paved for the use of parking vehicles. That was prior to the existing ordinance. Current ordinance requires parking areas to be paved. In order to put in the new business or to add to the existing business, additional paving would be required in that rear yard situation. The applicant's site plan was never really fully developed to show the capacity for the rear yard for parking. Staff estimates they could probably get six cars back there. However, 10 cars are required for the existing use, and they also want to display and sell cars, so there seems to be a parking shortage for that particular lot. In talking with the applicant and the owner of the property, staff advised them that they should combine the two lots that the, that are next to each other for the purpose of providing or meeting the parking requirements of the proposed business, which would be acceptable to staff. However, we have not received any response from the applicant or from the owners of the property to do that, and so staff is recommending deferral of the application until that situation could be worked out. That concludes staff report.
Any questions to Steve? No? Thank you, Steve. Is the petitioner here, please? It appears no.
Apparently, they're working on it right now.
Okay. Okay.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion for deferral for 30 days.
Second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to defer item number 13. All those in favor of that signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Those opposed? Item number 13 is deferred. Item number 14?
Item 14 is a conditional use permit. It's for an insurance auto auction business. The applicant is Eric Willitsen of Willitsen Land Engineering, representing the owner and also the business. The owner is Kirby Pearl, and the purpose of the application is vehicle storage and auction facility and offices. Generally located at 1522 East 34th Street North. It's an 11-acre, 11 and a half acre site, zoned I-1 light industrial. Currently, the existing land use is tire storage, outdoor tire storage, and the Shape Sioux Falls indicates it as a developed area. We have exhibits from the applicant showing the zoning vicinity, aerial vicinity, site plan, and a business description. In the area to the north, it is generally industrial zoning and developed. To the south, it's RC Recreation, Conservation, and RA1 Residential. Bryant Park is also located at a, at a corner of the subject property. To the east, it's industrial, and to the west, again Bryant Park and Volunteers of America offices and rental housing. We've given it a compatibility rating of three, potential incompatibility, again, possible conflict that could be remedied or minimized through project design, and according to the Shape Sioux Falls, traffic, parking, and other external effects should be directed away from the lower-intensity uses. Landscaping, buffering, and screening should be employed to minimize negative effects. That's Shape Sioux Falls, page 59. The applicant is proposing to locate an insurance auto auction business on the subject property, and a concept plan for site improvements has been provided with the application form. It's a pretty detailed plan in terms of improvements that are proposed for fencing... It's a pretty detailed plan in terms of improvements that are proposed for fencing, landscaping, paving of parking, and security. Staff is presenting this report on the basis of information received for retail, trade, and service business to be described in the I-1 light industrial district, therefore a conditional use permit is required. Located between East 34th and East 39th Street, east of North Cliff Avenue and east of Bryant Park, it's directly across from a residential neighborhood, and you've had some applications in this neighborhood before. Neighborhood representatives have contacted staff about the application and have also met with the applicant at a neighborhood meeting. They will be presenting information to you this evening concerning the proposed application. I suspect there'll be a representation of details, so I'll summarize what staff's analysis of the situation is. It is I-1 light industrial, which does allow the use under conditional use. We feel that the screening that is proposed and included in addendum report to you is sufficient to screen the property from the neighborhood. Setbacks are more than adequate on 34th. The landscaping on 34th is adequate, and they are proposing to maintain an existing tree shelter belt that is up against Bryant Park. City Parks and Recreation have reviewed the proposal and expressed two concerns. One, that they maintain the screening, level of screening that is there now at least, and then also maintain the level of maintenance of the landscaped area between the fence and the parked property. The conditional use plan does address those issues. They are providing additional parking, and for the retail use of an existing building, 24 spaces are required. The applicant is proposing to construct a new hard-surface parking lot for 41 additional parking spots west of the existing building and parking lot. That would be fenced with a gate into the storage area and probably be the primary public entrance into the facility. There is another gated entrance that goes directly into the storage yard, and the applicant should address how that circulation occurs. Landscaping plan indicates existing trees being preserved, a total of 12 are required, and a minimum of 19 are shown on this concept plan. Additional trees appear to be located just outside the property line in the right-of-way. Existing trees at a minimum should be preserved, and they have indicated they will do that next to Bryant Park. That should be shown on the plan. A security and screen fence eight feet high with two gated entrances is indicated in the front yard setback along 34th Street North. Six-foot-high securities and screen fence is indicated along the north and east sides of Bryant Park. Add a required side yard setback of 10 feet. The remaining sides of the subject property, security fencing six feet high at the property line. The addendum indicates fence materials and colors as proposed by the applicant. There's a slide that shows a similar application in another state for similar business. It appears to be a cyclone fence with slat inserts that are designed to look like vegetation. And perhaps the applicant can address that a little further. You are able to see through it somewhat, so it's not totally opaque, but it appears from the photographs that it provides sufficient screening. We have no comments from police, fire, water, and sewer. Traffic engineering indicates a petition for improvements to Van Epps Avenue should be provided. Drainage, certified drainage and grading plan is required, and planning comments include disposal of the remaining tires that are on the site. The applicant has proposed to do that. Provide a plan for removal of vehicles that do not sell. The applicant will address that this evening. Yard setbacks to the perimeter fence should be maintained with grass ground cover. It's not indicated on the plan, but would be required, should be required. Crushed asphalt is an allowed ground cover for the outdoor storage area, which would keep dust down and just generally be a more acceptable surface. It's not considered a parking lot, so it doesn't have to be paved. Staff notes that the residential neighborhood has expressed concern about future development uses on the subject property, and the applicant's meeting with them should be reported on Presently, staff's not aware of any other objections than the ones that are included in your addendum, which are protest petitions signed by neighbors and a letter from one of the individual neighbors indicating opposition. The primary reasons, to summarize, in those petition and letter indicate traffic safety, the concern about children passing or crossing over the street from the neighborhood to Bryant Park, noise, and just the general appearance next to their residential neighborhood. Because the application is currently submitted, has provided clarity to indicate the location and extent of work proposed. The complete description of the proposed use is being presented here this evening, and the proposed work requires a complete plan check by zoning and building services. Prior to obtaining a building permit, staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit with three stipulations. One, submit a petition for improvements to Van Epps Avenue. Two, disposal of remaining tires to be confirmed by a code enforcement officer. Three, receiving and storage of auction items only. A disposal plan for auction items not sold to be approved by the planning director. And that concludes staff report.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions for Steve?
Steve, can you clarify where the entrances are? One is on 34th Street then, and that's the main one?
There are actually two. There'll be two on 34th Street. One accesses directly into the storage yard. The other one goes to the parking lot and the building that is being used.
Okay. And the others from Van Epps?
There are no, I don't see any other entrances into the gated enclosure.
Any other questions to Steve?
Madam Chair, Steve, the existing business that was there, was that put in there under a conditional use permit also?
Not that I know of. It's been there for so long.
The tire?
Yeah.
Please.
Considered an industrial use prior to the existing, or the current ordinance.
Okay. Give us an idea, under industrial zoning, what could be allowed up there without any change of zoning?
It's a light industrial zoning, which could allow, you know, like an office park. 11 acres certainly could be subdivided, along with street improvements. We have streets on three, actually, yeah, three sides of the subject property. Two-and-a-half-acre sites are typical, so you could get several light industrial sites. The uses that are allowed in there as permissive are wholesale trade, light manufacturing, a contractor shop and storage yard, office, public utilities, frozen food locker, an antenna support structure, printing plant, motor vehicle service station, public service facility, and a medical office. That's permitted use. We have permitted special uses as long as they meet certain conditions. Off-premise sign, could have a billboard that conforms to the signage regulations. We could have an electrical substation, which does require an opaque screen, six-foot high, and located as far back as all setback lines, and a landscaping plan to be approved by the planning department. We could have a bus truck terminal located at least 300 feet from a residential street, so it'd be about halfway back on the block and require subdivision of the property. Unscreened outdoor storage, if the storage area lies 300 feet beyond any arterial street, which this does, and the storage area lying 300 feet beyond any R district, again, a subdivision of the property would be required. Warehouse, mini warehouse, as long as you don't store hazardous materials. A lumberyard, could have a lumberyard there. The storage area more than 300 feet away from any street shown on the major street plan. Retail, trade, and service, and that's the category we're using right now because it is not an accessory use to wholesaling or manufacturing. Therefore, we have to do this conditional use at the present time. A truck or bus wash would be allowed, subject to the water from the truck or bus wash being contained on the site. Truck repair, sales, and service with no on-screen storage, a drive-up service window. Motor vehicle sales, could have a motor vehicle sales, but it has to be in conjunction with the primary use of a motor vehicle repair shop.
Steve, these are all things that, with that particular zoning on that, that could go in there under the existing zoning that it has on?
As long as it meets those conditions, as I described them, they would not have to have a public hearing for your review.
Okay. I've got some other questions about, appears to me that the truck shop had, looked to me like, three buildings there, but I don't think they're looking, this particular operation is looking to use all three of those buildings, so I'll wait and get some clarification on that from the petitioner. Thank you, Steve.
Steve, to the best of your knowledge, has this area always been zoned light industrial?
Yes.
I mean, there's never been anything else there?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Steve, how about that park? Has that been there for a long time?
That's been there a long time, yeah.
This seems like kind of an odd place to put a park right up against light industrial.
I don't know the history on it, but I know it's been there a long time.
Thank you. Any further questions to Steve?
I'm still confused about Van Epps, a petition to bring another street by the site or up to the site?
There is an existing street right-of-way, Van Epps Avenue, next to the subject property, which is not improved, and which in the past-
Does it go all the way through?
It goes all the way through, yes.
It does?
Yeah. But, which has not been improved because adjacent property owners have not felt the need to have it improved, or they've not come in for permits or approvals that required improvement. But in the future, property owners have asked when that street's going to be improved so that they can develop their property. And so, as, what we try to do when these applications come in is try to get at least a petition for improvements that can be put on file, and when the time comes that property owners on both sides of the street have petitioned for improvement, the city can go ahead and make the improvements.
The park department would be one of the adjacent neighbors. Is that an automatic when that petition comes in? Would not Van Epps come right along the west side of this property, right along the-
Yeah.
Right along the park?
Yeah.
You're stipulating that a condition for approval be that they make that application?
That they submit that petition for improvement. It's not an application, it's a petition-
It's a petition.
For improvements, yes.
But that would be for something down the road?
Yes. When the time's right, then all of the petitions for approval will be laid out on the table and used to make the improvements.
Okay. Thank you, Steve.
Anything else? Thank you, Steve. Is the petitioner here, please?
Good evening. Eric Willidson, Willidson Lund Engineering, 902 South Cleveland Avenue, Sioux Falls. Here on behalf of the petitioners, the property owners, and also the, what would be considered the future property owners, should this conditional use permit be approved and they move forward with the project, the insurance auction. Like, thank staff for their report, their support of the project, and also their help in going through the conditional use process. I'm here representing, obviously, the owners of the property and also the insurance auction people. Mr. Steve Tybalt is also here tonight. He is the construction manager of the Insurance Auto Auction Incorporated business. They operate approximately 160 locations across the United States and Canada currently, and are investigating several sites in the area for a potential move. They are currently operating in, at the T corner, if you will, where the, there's actually two businesses operating out of that site right now, and they have agreed with the city of T to, they've expanded beyond the constraints of that site and need, one of the businesses need to move. They're sister companies, and the other company was there first, so the insurance auction is seeking to relocate. As some of you may have been, I believe, on the joint planning with Lincoln County on the conditional use permit for a site down by the T exit, which was approved, they're simply seeking options for other locations. I guess there's a number of areas that I'd like to cover tonight in light of some of the issues that have come up. Please, anytime, interrupt and ask questions if you do of that area that I'm in. I guess first and foremost, we did have a neighborhood meeting on February 24th, last Thursday. We sent out approximately 50 letters to the neighborhood residents in, along 34th Street and the intersecting streets, as well as the property owners and business owners surrounding the auto auction site. We had approximately 15 or 18 people attend the meeting last Thursday night, where we explained the project to them and tried to address concerns that they may have, and have since come up with some additional things that may help to alleviate some of their concerns. I guess the main areas that they were concerned about from the meeting seemed about, initially was the existing tire storage, or storage and recycling. It was a recycling operation that was going on there for very large tires. I don't know if you've visited the site and know the history of that whole issue. One of the requirements for the conditional use permit is the tires are all gone. That is certainly something we fully embrace, and the project would not move forward without the tires being gone. So be assured, rest assured, that tires would be gone from the site, and they're planning a major cleanup and restoration, that engrading project on that site to accommodate their use. Couple of the other items, screening, I think Steve touched on that a little bit, the traffic situation on 34th Street North, and drainage from the property and along 31st, or 34th Street North, and improvements to 34th Street North. I guess I'd also like to thank Commissioner Anderson, or Counselor Anderson, and his help with this project. He got involved in it as well. He's the representative in that area for those people, and has worked tirelessly to try and get 34th Street improved. And this use and this client, these owners are fully behind the city in improvements to 34th Street and will do their part in whatever it takes to try and get 34th Street improved, if that will improve safety, which undoubtedly it would. So we're certainly not opposed to improvements on 34th Street. I guess initially, what you need to realize, and those of you that were on the joint, in the joint meetings, realize what kind of an operation this is. First look by most people is this is a junkyard. This is not a junkyard. There are no sales of parts off cars. No parts are taken off any cars or put on any cars at this location. This is merely a staging point for cars that are recovered from, by insurance companies through defaults, through dealerships, and they are only available to dealers to purchase. The general public would not be allowed to come and purchase vehicles at this site. So it's not a for-sale for the general public. This is a wholesale, two auto auctions. The average life expect, or the average time on the lot is, ranges anywhere from 30 to 45 days per vehicle. They're simply brought here to process, to process titles so that clear title can be obtained, they can auction the cars off, and they go up for sale. Certainly, they need a place to store the vehicles for people to look at while they're going through the process, and then as soon as they're ready and titles are secured, those vehicles are put up for sale. There was a stipulation in one of the conditions about what they're to do with- There was a stipulation in one of the conditions about what they're to do with leftover cars. They're, they do not have a plan for cars that are left over, simply because there are none. They sell everything. There are not cars that stack up on the site because they can't sell. Everything has a value. They do not get paid for storage. They get paid to sell vehicles and turn them over and move them. Like I said, this is not a junkyard. Junkyards do come and buy from here. Nordstrom's is certainly one of their very good customers that come, buy vehicles from them and take them off-site. So, there are, is no junkyard-type facility where they would be stripping cars down, taking parts off them. That simply doesn't happen at this kind of, of a site. One of, one of the big items that came up was traffic on 34th Street. From their indications, they receive anywhere of 80, 100, 125 cars a week. They come in on, not semis, but they come in on two-car haulers, three-car haulers, four-car haulers, that come in, drop vehicles off and leave. If you do the math, this is an eight-to-five, Monday through Friday, operation. They do not open on, they're not open on weekends, they're not open at nights, they don't accept vehicles after hours. We're looking at, you know, one or two or three trips per hour is vehicles. So, not a huge increase, certainly not the trucks, traffic that was hauling tires in and out of here. So, we don't think the traffic, well, any use on this property is going to generate some traffic. We don't think that this type of use is, is a huge impact on, on 34th Street. They are projecting and currently have five or six full-time employees at their site in T. So, I mean, you're talking five or six employees that park there. The, the vehicles that bring haul vehicles in and out, and we're estimating, like I said, two or three trips an hour, max. And then the auto auction, has an auction every Wednesday from 9:00 AM to noon, so three hours out of the day. They generally get 20 to 25 people that, that actually come to the site. The vast majority, well, not the vast, 50% is what they're telling me. 50% of, of the dealings they do are online, that people buy these vehicles online. And they have a live auction, at the same time they have an online auction. So, people are, these 20 or 25 people are, are buying at the same time that people are doing it online, and it's shifting to more online type of uses. As Steve indicated, if this conditional use permit is approved, they will be required to submit a site plan for the operation, which include grading and drainage of the site, and how well accomplish that. They do not intend to pave large areas, like I said, their intent is to do a, a general grading and shaping operation on the site and then cover it in four to six inches of crushed aggregate. Some of the roads may be crushed asphalt, the rest of it'll just be crushed base, just as a place to put the vehicles, keep the dust down, and to be able to operate when it rains, and get rid of the mud or whatever. It certainly cleans up the site quite a bit. They, we did, again, meet with the Park Department, and the Parks Department is mostly concerned with, keep it trimmed up, keep it looking nice, and, and don't, you know, don't cut the trees down between the two of us, and, and they said, we, we won't do that. Certainly, you know, any conditions you would like to apply in, in that respect to ensure that, that they maintain the site is fine with them. They are fully support the petition, or they don't have a problem with signing a petition for improvements on Van Epps Avenue. I have to question or disagree with Steve a little bit on the Van Epps Avenue right-of-way. Going through the plaits that I have, don't show Van Epps with a clear right-of-way all the way through the property. There is no right-of-way in the park, there's no right-of-way, in a, continuous through, this property only has 33 feet of right-of-way, and it takes at least the 66. So, while there is right-of-way, a 66-foot right-of-way up to the property from 39th Street, it does not go all the way through to 34th Street. If at some point that road were to propose to go through by other developers, as long as they meet the criteria of the 50% for the petition, this company's on board with that, and doesn't have a problem with their street improvements. Access, then, would, you know, they could, they would be, then be able to have an access onto 39th Street, and if that happened, they would close off one of the accesses from 39th, or from 34th. The center, I should say, the west access that actually leads into the fenced-in area, they don't intend to use that at this time. It would likely remain closed, and the only access in and out of the site would be the main entrance on the east that goes into the building. I don't, you know, there, there's a lot of items, a lot of issues, taxes, and what this would produce for the city. A lot of items. I, I guess at this point, I, I just want to answer any questions that anybody has about what the intent is of this business and what they are willing to do in the way of conditional use to operate at this location.
I would just like to clarify one thing, Eric. There is only one auction per week, and that's on Wednesday from 9:00 to noon?
That is correct. Three hours, once a week.
Okay. Any other questions of Eric?
Eric, one of my concerns when we were dealing down in Harrisburg, I had went out to the T site, and what was explained to me is the cars that they have are fenced in, but they have a drop-off area. It was pretty good size, and the particular day I was out there, there were an awful lot of cars there, and I understand that's a processing situation they then have, once they're dropped off there. I don't, it might not be fair to ask you, with that timeframe it takes to process these cars, get them back behind fence, is that their intention here, or is their processing drop-off going to be inside the fenced area?
The intent on this property would be, and they are operating under a little different circumstance, and a little different, they're, they're across from Ag out, out in T. And at this location, all of the drop-off and pickup would be within the fenced-in area, with inside the screening. And I, I guess I was, add as a side note, that they do not allow other people to come and load and unload cars. They, you bring your truck in there, they load you, they unload you, and it's all within the screening fence. And you're, you are correct. Out at, at the T site, the drop-off area is outside the fence. It will not be that way. There simply isn't the room, and, and the fence is already up, and the screening's already on. And they, everything at this site would be done within the fence. You know, you, you talk about turnaround. There really isn't any turnaround. I mean, they don't do anything to the vehicles. They don't take fuel out of them, they don't put, you know, they don't drain fluids, they don't take parts off them, they don't put parts on. They simply take the vehicle off the, off the truck, park it in a place to store it until they can get clear title to it, and as soon as clear title is, is obtained, it goes on the auction, is sold at the next auction. And like I said, they sell everything. Steve is, Tybalt is here as well, if you'd like to ask him specific questions about operations and what they intend. He's here to answer that as well, but the way I understand it, everything will be done with inside the fenced area. The only thing outside it is some parking for employees and, and people coming to the auction.
Speaking of parking, on the auction day, if you were to have 25 cars there, plus six employee cars, do you have enough parking lot there to facilitate that, or would some of that parking have to be inside the fenced area?
Some of the parking may, overflow parking may occur in the fenced-in area, and, and that's the intent. There won't be any parking on, they don't want people parking on 34th Street North to come to the auction, and, and they will provide additional parking if it's needed. There's almost 50 spaces, 50, 54 spaces right now outside.
But would that be for all three of the buildings, those 50-some spaces?
Some of the parking spaces do, are on the other three buildings. To clarify, the building on the far east is now been leased to a wind energy company that, that builds wind energy generators or refurbishes them. The center building, the main building, is vacant right now. There are negotiations going on as to whether or not the auction would utilize that building as well, but certainly there's availability for the parking out front. If that were to go away, their second option is inside the fence, in the drop-off area, that cars could park in there as well.
Okay, thank you. The letters that are, are the petition, it just seems like they're overwhelmingly concerned about traffic and the proximity to the park.
Well, that's understandable, with, with the park being there as well. Is there going to be traffic on 34th Street? Absolutely. 34th Street's a collector off of a Class 1 arterial street, Cliff Avenue, with a signal, with a signalized intersection. So, they, they will be utilizing that intersection, but there's also an opportunity for them to go to the east, to Lewis Avenue, and to the interstate that direction. Granted, not, not everything, not everybody that's coming to buy these things and buy these cars are from local Sioux Falls. They, they're from out of town, too. So, they're going to be using the interstate whether they're going north up to 90, or whether they're going back east and onto 229. But, this is not a huge traffic generator. Like I said, they're, they're one or two trips an hour for vehicles coming in, that three-hour period on a Wednesday, when those 20 or 25 cars come to attend the auction. And then, there are, there will be other times during the week where people, dealers, dealers can come and look at the cars, and walk them, you know, and they're coming one or two at a time. Is there other traffic on 34th Street? Absolutely. It's, it's not going away. 34th Street is a collector street. And absolutely, in my opinion, it, it needs to be improved. It's a rural section right now, and, and there is concern about safety at that park, I, I have no doubt. They have constructed sidewalk in the street up for the first, I don't know, 300 feet or so off Cliff Avenue, and then it stops. It certainly may extend further. Kenny Anderson, we met with him several times, and he's, I think at least, and, and he's here tonight, and maybe you can ask him. I think he's excited that he's getting a better use up there and generating some interest that he can then forward to his constituents in the council that can maybe move up improvements to 34th Street. There are some agreements in place with the people that live in the Norton Acres subdivision and the City of Sioux Falls about what the city can do to improve their street. And essentially, it, my understanding anyway, is it needs their request. Unless they ask the city to improve that street and assess them for it, it's pretty much going to be on the city to do it themselves.
And we can let the councilman speak to that, too.
And let them, but I, I would just say that it's been his interest to, you know, that, to try and do something with 34th Street North, and this operation, this company's behind that, and would support improvements to 34th Street North.
Eric, you've engineered this. Is there drainage problems up there at all?
I don't think there's, now, drainage, last summer, everybody had drainage problems. Was last year a normal year? I, I don't think so. Are there some drainage issues on 34th Street North? Certainly. With the rural section that's up there and, and the culverts rather than standard curb and gutter and storm sewer system that could be improved, yes. Are we required to provide a drainage plan? That, that's part of this deal, too. We will provide a drainage plan to make sure that this site doesn't aggravate that situation. Like I said, there, there needs, you know, if there's some improvements done to 34th Street North, certainly this would, would fall in line with that. We will grade this site and provide the drainage detention, whatever's required by engineering, in accordance with current design standards for this type of use. So, we will handle drainage, but the drainage problems on 34th Street North aren't necessarily 100% this, this property's issue.
Thank you, Eric. Appreciate the comments.
Any other questions for Eric?
I would offer one other thing, and, and there was pictures of it. They have offered some different options for screening, maybe something that we haven't seen used as screening in Sioux Falls before. This is some stuff, and, and it's on the screen there, that they used at one of their other locations. From what they tell me, that city then adopted this as one of their standards. That, that's, it does, it's, it's a little different than just slats. It kind of makes it look like a hedge. It's about 85, 90% opaque, lets the wind blow through it. The other, I mean, they've offered up a wood fence across the front, if that's what is required. Also, they offered a, a metal steel fence to be put up, a solid steel fence. And at the neighborhood meeting, the neighborhood thought that might draw graffiti issue. So, it's like, well, this is at least something that's removable, and, and the wind can blow through it, and it maybe looks a little better than just regular slats, but they're certainly, would, would go that route if that's one of the conditions, so.
Okay, thank you, Eric.
Thanks.
Thank you, Eric.
Mr. Tybalt, did you want to come forward and add anything?
Good evening. My name is Steve Tybalt. I'm the Director of Construction for Insurance Auto Auctions located in West Chester, Illinois. I think Eric covered everything very well. If anyone has any specific questions about operations and that type of thing, I'll be more than happy to answer those.
Steve, I had a question for, for Eric, but I think I had it answered, and that's the drop-offs. Will that be behind this fence?
Absolutely. All the operations for receiving cars, loading cars and everything, will be inside the fenced-in area. The only thing that would be outside of fenced-in area would be buyer parking, employee parking, that's in front of the buildings.
How many cars do you envision being back, back there on a, on an average, on a daily?
On average, nationwide, we average somewhere around 125 cars per acre. And it's roughly, if a 10-acre site, because you got setbacks and buildings take up some of the space, so you're probably looking at about a little over 1,000 cars.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Tybalt, Steve, is this the preferred site of the two?
Yes, it is. And, and the reason why we have to do this is, as, as you know, as you go through processes and that type of thing. In the past, we've had an op, had a bad spell once, where we went through a process, got our, got our conditional use and our zoning, and then two months later, the state came in and started condemnation proceedings because they wanted to take it over for a highway. So, we had all our eggs in one basket in that scenario. So, one of the things our Board of Directors and our senior management said, look, we can't have that happen again. So, we look at opportunities within the market area that we need to do. We, we truly outgrew our T marketer, our, our T location, and we're located there with our sister company, and that's the only reason why I've seen some cars outside the fence. If you go by there now, you only see those on the daytime hours. You won't see anything out there now as far as operating, other than during the eight-to-five operation.
How large is that T site, if I might ask? That's 20 acres, isn't it?
It, it's roughly about 20 acres, yeah. And, and our sister company is, is on, is an auto auction company as well. It's called Adessa. We're owned by the same parent company, and their operation has expanded as well in that market area. So, we got two competing customers, or two competing businesses need the same, same parcel dirt, so.
The kind of cars you get come in all shapes and sizes?
Comes in all shapes and sizes, that's correct. Not all the cars are total loss vehicles or insurance claims. We also have what's called a dealer backlot program. Say a local four dealerships running a promo where they, I'm sure they do it up here as well. I know they do it in a lot of places where, bring it in, drag it in, whatever, and I'll give you $3,000 for any trade-in. Well, these people bring in their cars and get $3,000 for a trade-in, and a lot of times the cars are less than pristine or very old vehicles, and the dealers don't have any need for them. So, what they do is they bring it to our facility, and then we offer. So what they do is they bring it to our facility and then we auction them off, okay? The auction process on that and the title processing is very clear, very clean for us, and it's a real quick turn because those vehicles are already coming to us with a title, okay? The only reason our cars sitting on our lot are thirty to forty-five days is because those titles, the titles are coming from the insurance providers and most cases have to go to the state and the state processes the titles. The good news in South Dakota is the state's very quick in the title turn process.
Thank you. Any other questions for Steve?
No, no, no.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Is there anybody from the audience that would like to address this item?
My name's Bernie Schmidt, and some of the neighbors in the area kind of expressed some concerns. And so I am the one who circulated the petition. And it was a real learning experience for me because I found that opinions are pretty much scattered all over the place on this issue. About a third of the petitioners are totally against this project and about two-thirds are for it with some reservations mostly concerning traffic. Thirty Fourth Street North is a rural section that's, doesn't have sidewalks. We have commingled traffic. We have children who ride on bicycles and trikes and walk to the park, and they have to do so on that street with all the other traffic. This became an issue when we got our letter from the auto auction place. And in their letter, they said they would have fifty to a hundred onsite bidders making multiple visits during a week. When the traffic became an issue, then it became twenty to twenty-five onsite bidders once a week. We don't know which it is. Is it fifty or a hundred multiple times? Is it three drop-offs of cars an hour? Is it, we haven't really been told. It seemed to have changed. The real sticking point, it seems, for the four houses directly across from this place or this proposed use is the retail nature of their business. This is Zoned I-1. We didn't consider, when we bought our properties, that we would be in a commercial zone. This type of retail traffic, we don't feel is allowable.
But Mr. Schmidt, you know, there is no, it is not a retail. It's a strictly wholesale business.
Well, but when you have that many onsite bidders, though, making multiple visits, doesn't that become more of a commercial nature, though? I don't mean to be argumentative with you.
Sure. It's an industrial type. It fits an industrial zoning.
So those were the main concerns. I had originally had some concerns about screening, but with the, what they had sent on the living hedge or whatever, I think that would be a great idea. I mean, I think they might try to work with us here on some of these things. I just don't know how we can get by the added noise and the added traffic. And so that's, I guess, where we're at.
Okay. Any questions for Bernie?
Bernie, I appreciate you getting up here this evening and sharing that with us.
I just don't be shocked then after speaking public.
No, and I know it can be tough, and this can sometimes be tough, too, because you try to please everybody a little bit.
You know, we as a neighborhood, I think, appreciate this condition use and the opportunity to be heard.
That's kind of why I wanted Steve to kind of read us, hey, what could be allowed up there under the existing zoning?
I believe that we understand that something will be ending up going there, right? Something's going to end up there. But we wanted to be a good fit, you know, with the neighborhood. I believe that they would be a great neighbor if they could have their business, primary business entrance on Thirty Ninth Street. I believe we could make this work as a neighborhood and all parties could work together if we could make it Thirty Ninth Street.
What else could we do to make you feel good?
Well...
I kind of liked, I kind of looked at that green siding they want to put on the, that's a unique idea.
I believe that would be much better than the base slab.
I got to tell you, I ran up there and looked at the site and I, gosh, that tire store that was there, I'd never seen anything like that before. I never saw so many tires in one spot, but I also noticed some other junk in there. You know, there was a lot of concrete culverts that obviously they must be storing for somebody. I saw an old trailer, you know, sitting in the corner there.
Right.
We've had some experience with these guys, this company. We went through this down in the Harrisburg, and that was kind of a tough vote, too. Everybody wasn't all kind of totally in favor of that, but we passed it. And frankly, I was a little surprised to see them here tonight. I thought we'd kind of had them taken care of, but I think they run kind of a pretty class operation or everything I've been able to kind of find out on my own.
Well, that may be true. I went out to the T operation today at a little after ten this morning and was a little more than surprised at the number of vehicles, which said to me that there might be more than twenty or twenty-five bidders onsite. But I wouldn't know that because I, you know, I only spent a few minutes, but the parking lot was full.
We'll probably ask Steve to come back up and clarify that a little bit for us.
I would assume, you know, that with working with some stipulations that maybe the neighborhood, you know, could be on board with some things. I just don't know how we get by the traffic and the commingling with the children and the young adults who walk to and from the park and other places. I just don't know how we get by the commingled traffic. And if we can get by that, boy, I think I would be supportive of our probable neighbors.
Thank you, Bernie. I appreciate that.
Any other? Thank you.
Thank you, Bernie.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kaderi Awera. I've been in the city of Sioux Falls for thirty-three years. Before I go to talk a little bit about auction, I want to just clarify two things about traffic around T. Let's separate the two issuing T. In T, we have a Sioux Falls Auto Auction, which is every Wednesday, more than hundred and fifty, two hundred people is coming to that auction in the same spot, in the same territory. At the same time, you have an auto auction, which is every Wednesday I go on there as a dealer, I notice more than twenty-five people is in there. So when you're talking about T, so many cars outside and so many people traveling through there, it's totally two separate different issue. You have a Sioux Falls Auto Auction in there, which I said hundred and fifty, two hundred dealers going to go over there. And another part of the building is the Auto Auction, which is not more than twenty people, twenty-five people is in there. I've been there this Wednesday morning, okay?
You're a car dealer?
I am a hobby car dealer, not a full-time car dealer. I, you can call me car alcoholic or whatever you call it. I love cars. I just work with the car all the time. So yes, I have a dealer license, so.
So you've been to the auction before?
I've been in the auction since that auction is open. Matter of fact, that Sioux Falls Auto Auction, I'm the one who's broken the ground of that building twenty-five years ago. It was a different industry and later on, that industry went down and then we started with this car action in Sioux Falls. But again, the traffic in this territory, which is never with concern about it, I just want to, they understand, the T is two different businesses in there on Wednesday. Absolutely. Today, more than about hundred car park outside.
So I think what you're saying is, on Wednesdays...
In Wednesdays.
The auction from nine to noon.
The car action, Sioux Falls Auto Auction start at ten o'clock in T, and then the car insurance action start at nine o'clock in the morning. So you have two group in there in the same time.
Typically, we're talking twenty, twenty-five people.
And the car, and the insurance action, yes. So if this business is moving to northeast, you're going to see twenty-five, not more than thirty people on Wednesday morning in there. Only on Wednesday morning, from nine o'clock to eleven o'clock, twelve o'clock, okay? So you're taking all the traffic from the Sioux Falls Auto Auction out of that place. So it's very important to understand that. Yes, the neighbor say we went over there, we see hundred, hundred and fifty car in there in T, that's true, but because it's two action going on in the same time over there. So now with the northeast, we're talking only about Sioux Falls Insurance Action. So we're talking about twenty-five, thirty people. And again, at the same time, there's a lot of people outside the city of Sioux Falls and outside the state. And I was shocked. Last week, I saw people betting in the car from Denver to Sioux Falls online.
Over the internet?
Over the internet, yeah. So the most important thing to understand, the northeast needs some businesses and cleanup. And I've been there, too. I see all this junk tire, all those stuff. This is a legitimate businesses nationally known, and I think the people is running, I have a relationship with them. They are respectful people and management, and they try to do whatever it takes to clean up this place and bring their businesses over there. And I'm very sure they follow their commitment, and I feel northeast of Sioux Falls is needs some cleanup. We need some businesses coming there to make a better job and bring a little more income to the territory and at the same time, clean up the messes we have in there. And if I not trust this business, I wouldn't be here to talk about it, period. But again, the people is working in there. They are very responsible people. I deal with them since that business is open. Matter of fact, even they don't allow you to pull your car out of there for a safety issue. They have a forklift, they have all the machine to make sure their car, the car you buy, be in the trailer for you and then leave it. So I encourage you guys to think about it. And this is a wonderful business and nationally been known, like some of the speakers said. They have more than hundred and two hundred businesses around the country. We have in Des Moines, St. Paul, Minnesota, and Omaha, same businesses. And people is satisfied with them, and I'm very sure in Sioux Falls, people is be satisfied with them. And again, anytime we bringing in new businesses, some people have a right to ask questions, and I appreciate those asking the questions, but I hope they not been misled, because if you bring this car action over there, is a lot better what exists over there right now. I'm very sure. Because, and there's another places need looking forward. So why we let this business go outside our city or go to another county, not staying there in here to benefit our community? I supporting hundred percent everything make this community better.
When you buy a car at this auction, how much time do you have to get that car off the lot? When you buy it that day, do you take it that day?
Matter of fact, you buying it Wednesday, you have to take it out, not later Monday, which is three, four days. And a lot of people is taking them out. My friend has bought two car today, and he took them out right away after pay for it. And many of those car drivable. And again, it's not a junkyard, like another speaker said.
He bought it today. You were at the auction today.
He bought it today, and I bet them two cars. Some other people keep betting on me. I didn't win it. But no, most of those cars going out the same day, most other cars maybe next day.
They didn't hire you to come up here and talk to us tonight, did they?
Absolutely not. I never been purchased by money. No, no share. I just supporting the business, and I know northeast is needs some improvement around there and some businesses, and that's why I supporting it.
Thank you.
And not because I know just the people over there.
Any other questions for Mr. Awera? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name's Cal Coball. I live right across from what they proposed to be one of the main entrances to this thing. We were there long before the tire company came in. And my wife and I, before we bought that house, took a very good drive around the entire neighborhood, all up and down the residential and especially up and down the industrial, because that was where some of my concern was. I'd always lived in a neighborhood. You know, I grew up in an alley, and we knew everybody. And this is the first time in twenty-five years that I'd been in a neighborhood where everybody knew everybody. They weren't into fences as much, and all the kids knew each other. They played with each other. It was such a great deal when they got the park down there because the kids needed it so bad. But my main concern is the traffic. That road wasn't built for trucks. When the tire place came in, that was the first time we'd seen that amount of semi-traffic ever. We had a business that built roofing trusses down on the other end of Thirty Fourth, but they came in on the concrete down along the side. And if you look at the way they rebuilt Thirty Fourth Street North intersection when they rebuilt North Cliff, everybody always wonders, why does it curve over like that? And that's because according to the county, the road is supposed to be about eight feet north. I had a guy come up and do a survey of my property a couple of years ago, and he told me that my property line is directly on the asphalt line of the road. You know, according to, if anybody wanted to build a new road in the county or the city, you know, it's got to be at least two feet off your property line. But that's not the case up here. We've gotten along with the road fine. We're fine with the road. We get along with each other great, and our kids run up and down to the park and stuff. We haven't, we're not asking for sidewalks. But my main concern is the amount of traffic. We had six to seven semis a day coming in with empty tires for that place across the street, and nothing ever went out. That's why there were eight thousand tires left over. He was making money for collecting things that legally he'd have to charge five thousand dollars a tire to get rid of according to EPA standards. It's not something you can throw away. They have to pay to be able to get rid of these tires. But if he buys them for a recycling fee, he can store them forever and make thousands. He drove two Lamborghinis. You know, my main concern right now, that was what we had to go through with him, was the traffic, semis and semis and semis on this little two-lane asphalt road that wasn't built for it. They've got concrete on Thirty Ninth.
Cal, do you see this operation be an improvement on that?
I have no problem with them using land whatsoever, but I wonder, you know, for them, truck access on concrete roads that's already got curb and gutter and storm sewers on the other side of the property that they say they've got access to, or the west side that they say they've got access to, I think would be not against hardly anybody's objection as far as the neighborhood goes. But, you know, as far as I went, when we drove up and down through there before we bought our property, it was a quiet industrial place. It was warehouses, you know, it was Nordica. It was the concrete place, which mainly stored things and occasionally distributed them out on the north side of the property. We never heard any of that. And I've got a good-sized house there. I got a hundred and twenty-foot garden. I'm happy there. My wife passed away a couple of years ago, and I'm hoping to use that upstairs bedroom on Thirty Fourth Street for a music studio. But boy, with six, you know, three to five trucks an hour.
I can't speak for everybody else. I'm hoping you can grow comfortable with this and this company.
Other than the street access, I'm perfectly comfortable with it. You know, I know nobody's ever going to put an apple orchard up there. I love that. I grew up on a three-block apple orchard. I know about that. But my only objection, really, mainly, is the access. You know, if they could find any other way to do that, I think they'd have the majority of the neighborhood willing to go along with whatever they're doing there, as long as they aren't stacking them twelve feet high, you know? And it doesn't sound like they will, so.
Thank you, Cal.
That's my main thing, and that's the main thing I wanted to say. Thanks.
Okay. We'll allow one more person. And sir, if you'll bring new information for us. We understand that the access and the traffic is an issue.
Yeah, I have a different question. I'm Martin Weber. I live at eighteen fifteen East Thirty Fourth Street North. I'd like to see the project go in. There's certainly an improvement over the tires. My one question would be on the drainage, when they do the study. At present, on the Thirty Fourth Street North, on the west end, whenever it rains a half inch or more, you get a big puddle of water. It goes over into the park as well on the east side. And then on the east side of their lot, at present, when it... And then on the east side of their lot, at present, when it rains, water comes out and starts into the first culvert going to the east and draining. So when they do the drainage study, are they going to allow water to drain off into the culverts along 34th Street North?
Sure. And maybe Steve, you can address the drainage. What's a, what will they have to do as the landowner with regard to drainage?
The stipulations or the requirement of engineering before they would get a grading permit would be they have to provide a grading plan and a drainage plan. The drainage plan can't run any more water off the site than currently runs and they can't intentionally direct the water to impact another property.
Does that clarify for you a little bit?
The reason I know there's a lot of water runs off that, I walked my dog for 15 years. So how much water are you going to allow then to run out? I mean, if you don't know what it's going out now and you say you can't increase it, means you can keep the present level.
Sure.
So I'd like to know whether or not, how much water, because quite a bit of water comes out on the east side and starts down in the first culvert. And along their entrance, entryway into their lot, you know, when the tire place was there, it washed out the culvert once, or part of the driveway.
Okay.
A lot of water.
It's kind of an engineering question, isn't it?
Yeah, Eric, do you want to come back please?
Certainly, and I think I indicated that before. Obviously, we need to submit a drainage plan that needs to get approved by engineering for the use. There will be a grading in. We are, I don't want to say, we're the top of the hill on 34th Street. Water drains both directions from essentially from this site. It also drains from the site to 34th Street. About half of it, maybe a little bit more than half, it comes towards 34th, the rest of it drains towards 39th. They, quite frankly, they haven't hired me to do the drainage study until they found out whether or not they could, they were in allowable use.
Sure.
But a drainage plan and a grading plan is required for approval of a grading plan before they can start.
And so if you have to do any detention on the site, you will do that?
We'll do that in accordance with the current engineering design standards. I mean, we follow design standards, that's what city goes by, that's what we go by, that's what will be required.
And maybe you can talk with this gentleman after.
They express some concerns about drainage and can understand that with the rural section that's there and maybe, you know, needed improvements to 34th Street. We're not disputing that 34th Street maybe needs some improvements. That it's an industrial road and residential. But it certainly is a collector's street that supports industrial, commercial-type traffic. And yeah, maybe need something done with it and would support that.
But as far as the drainage goes, if the site's accepted, they'll go forth with the drainage study per what engineering's?
Absolutely.
Design standards are, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
It's required for approval. I mean, they will not get a grading permit without an approved drainage plan.
Eric, you're not going to leave a low spot for these folks. I mean, they want to use this whole, the company you're representing. If you've got a low spot in here, somehow you got to configure that.
Right, we'll do the grading that, you know, to try and alleviate, yeah. If there's some water that stands on the site, obviously, they want to use the entire 10 acres.
If I remember right, you're also going to bring in some sort of material for this whole 11 acres.
We'll be bringing in a crushed aggregate, not a hard surface parking lot, but something that water can go through, keeps the dust down. It also helps out a little bit in retaining some water and getting more of it maybe to go down. But regardless, a drainage plan is required, grading drainage for the site plan and will comply with engineering design standards.
Thank you, Eric.
Thanks.
Okay. Did we have one last person?
My name is Cheryl Taylor and I am with a, represent a group that owns the northeast corner of the intersection of Cliff at 34th Street. So right, the Kirby right there. And of course, I have to keep, we have to keep an eye towards future development for that and it is what it is up there. It's I, light industrial, I1. But my question is more about this Van Epps Avenue question. There's a little, let's call it a one-block stub up there that has the potential to be developed for an entrance into the north lot line for the auto company. Now, does that mean that the city would just do that? Or would it be the standard way where the property owners to the west along that stretch and the property owners to the east along that stretch pay for the improvements? Would we have to go through all that business and those property owners pay? Is that how it would be?
Jeff, do you want to speak to that, please?
Who would pay for that on that one-block? Is that another roadblock to getting this road?
It's an opportunity.
So who would pay for that?
Certainly. Jeff Schmidt from the City Planning Office. The city doesn't pay for local collector's streets, the adjacent property owners do. So we're requesting a petition to have the adjacent property owners petition to improve that street and then they would pay their fair share.
And there's 33 feet on the east and 33 feet?
On the west. And then depending on what their share is, there's a front foot cost to make those improvements and they'd pay their share. Right now, we don't want to just do the east half without doing the west half and that's why we have to have everybody petitioning and supporting it to do it. Otherwise, you're correct, you'd only do a portion of it and that doesn't make sense. But again, could we do the north portion and get the north portion in? So at least they could get to their site and then have the traffic coming in from the north without doing the entire thing north to south.
Do the neighbors know about this plan? Have you told them about this possibility yet?
No, we have not had a, the city has not had a.
It has to go past this problem.
This is the discussion right here, yes.
Okay.
But again, we were discussing over here on these two chairs sitting over here. We think that's the preferred route to go is to have the access come in from the north with some improvements, some improvements to Van Epps.
Okay.
If that would be the condition that would be put on this application.
Continuing down then, there's a, the gray area of whether or not there is a street right-of-way.
Correct.
Okay, so was that never platted or was it?
That's correct, it was never platted.
Never platted, hasn't been vacated.
And it has not been vacated.
Okay, so then we have the auto company can build right up to the very dotted line because there is no street there. Never was?
Up to the right-of-way.
Right, so there's the one-block stub, then there's nothing, there's nothing, no allowance for a street. Never has been and never will be. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
And so they can build right up to their very lot line or their setbacks or whatever?
That's correct.
Their 10-foot or?
Yeah, an industrial district, that 10-foot.
Okay.
Yes.
So there is no street. And then how about from the west edge of the park, there never has been or never will be a park? I mean, a street? On the west end of the park?
Never's a long time. I mean, there's no platted right-of-way next to the park. Could there be possible if they would plat right-of-way next to the park? But again, that would be a discussion with the neighbors and whether or not they want to have that.
And the neighbor being one would be the city and then one would be my group.
And a public hearing, the neighborhood.
Okay, the neighborhood, all right. Okay, I just wanted to clarify the street thing, how the one-block stub goes in.
Certainly.
And who pays and how it's going to affect the neighborhood.
The adjacent property owners pay with their petitions.
Like every place else?
Correct.
Okay. Then also, I don't live up there, but I've, because I have an interest in this property and I am a parent, I've always thought that Bryant Park was kind of sweet and I just learned that Bryant School used to sit on Bryant Park. That's how it got its name. So it used to be a school site from the county. Maybe this is more to the street department or I don't know who, the parks department. But consider, please, a painted crosswalk, there is no painted crosswalk there for the children to cross to the park. And then like on 27th and Phillips, there are flashing lights for kids. You know, some sort of alert that there are children nearby. That might satisfy the parents and the grandparents up there who have children come to play on that park. Because it's across what will be a busier street. And maybe just until this street problem is addressed, perhaps the auto auction company would consider in its advertising and customer information to direct its, the traffic through Potsdam Avenue and try to get as much over to the east coming that way instead of coming up past the park. That might be a consideration to them.
Any questions for Cheryl?
Cheryl, thank you, a couple of good ideas there. Thank you so much.
We'll take one more. Because we got to give the councilman time, you know?
No problem. Kirby Proll, the, I guess, owner on this property. And I just had a couple of comments that I thought I'd make and see if you had any other questions. But you know, one of the things that we're working on, obviously, those tires were a big problem for everybody and nobody likes them and we're, and so there's some heartache over that. But the buildings I own, the land I'm going to own and I'm going to, part of my stipulation on buying it is every tire is gone. I don't want to own that piece with any of those tires on like most people wouldn't want to. And if anyone's been going up over there for the last three months, they've seen that, I can't believe how fast they're going. And we had set the closing date out a couple more months because I thought it was going to take longer to get them off. And they told me the end of March and I didn't think it was true, but I think they're going to hit that. So that's one thing. The other thing with Van Epps, you know, Van Epps isn't a bad idea and of course, if everything were great, it would be to go up north and then go to 39th Street and go over. But the city doesn't have a light there and I think the city's a little bit worried about having a bunch of traffic, you know, traffic piling out on the 39th Street and making turns without a traffic light, which 34th Street has. Was just a thought I had. And you know, with that land, I've, I got to do something with it. And I, you know, I can't, I guess, just let it sit there. You know, I'd have to put buildings on it and rent it out and do something with it. You know, obviously, you don't just turn it into a hayfield and mow it and pay taxes on it. So 10 acres, you probably build a couple hundred thousand square feet of warehouse and, you know, on that property and then rent it out to somebody or sell off parcels or whatnot. And I think there's going to be traffic irregardless up there on 10 acres of industrial land, you know? And so that's the only comments I had. So if there's any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
I've asked too many questions already, Kirby. I'm afraid these guys are all going to get mad at me here.
No, that's all right.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Kirby.
Kenny Anderson, Sioux Falls. Thank you for this time. Number one, I want to thank the neighborhood. At the meeting, they were very good. They've been burned by a business up there before and they want to make sure that whoever moves in there is going to be a good neighbor. Quickly to talk about this, East 34th Street North has been on my agenda for a couple of years now. It's a road that has been beaten up by the industrial usage of the road. It's in, and it is a residential road actually. It's built as a residential road. So it's not up there to really take the heavy beating of a lot of traffic. The neighborhood's concerns about traffic up there are very legitimate and it is something that we've discussed over with the company time and time again. The Van Epps option, I still feel is the best option up there to assist in taking care of the traffic. The 38th Street North, that feeds into the industrial park where the cement plant is. First-rate excavating company also is on that block and they take all their heavy equipment in and out of that road also. So it's built more to take the heavier traffic. And I think that still is a good option to assist in reducing the traffic on East 34th Street North. So I'm working very hard with the administration, with planning and that to look at basically improving East 34th Street North and taking a look at that Van Epps option to assist this business in moving in. And I'm glad to hear the comments from the neighborhood and everything. I think that the company has gone, you know, above and beyond to try to make sure that they're alleviating the concerns.
Thank you. Any questions of the councilman?
Madam Chair, Kenny, the idea about a painted crosswalk and a children's crossing area, how does something like that happen?
Um, that would be.
I mean, I thought that was a good idea.
I think it was a great ideal. And any type of signage up there also noting that there's a park up there and that there's a lot of children there. You know, it's the north end, I'm a north-ender, I grew up up there. Our kids are rambunctious and they like to get out and have some fun. So when they get to that park, I've seen things, they had a small dirt mound on the corner of the park and the development there last summer and they were using it as a jump. And they were jumping out in the street, of course, so it was something that, you know, it just, that's what kids do, they have fun. So yes, I think that would be a great ideal. That would be something that we would take to planning and petition planning to put that in. And I think that would be something that could be easily done. Yes, I will, I will support that very strongly also.
Kenny, I'm getting the impression that you're in favor of this particular business being located up there.
I do like the business. I've actually spoken, after our neighborhood meeting, I ran into a couple of friends that are truck drivers. And I mentioned this company and they said that they had delivered some product in Illinois and Indiana, I believe they have sites. And they said that this company is very professional and that they keep their lots clean. You know, once again, they do not own these vehicles. So they don't want anybody seeing what's on their lot either. They want to get those vehicles in and out. So I think that this will be a better fit for the neighborhood than what OTR Tire was and that, once again, they're willing to buy the property, they're going to make the investment in the property and in the neighborhood. They're willing to do that, that's something else we have to look at too. It's a lot better than having them just lease the property and not be responsible and maybe ending up disappearing in the middle of the night.
Kenny, with the conditional use, if we approve it or disapprove it, I think that's fine unless somebody wants to take it to council. Is there anything particular we should keep our eye on the ball here as far as any additional stipulations that you think we ought to pay any attention to?
Well, I think the neighborhood's been very vocal about what they would like to see up there and I hope that we listen. That's the number one thing. The traffic up there on East 34th Street North, it isn't just that business that they're concerned about. It's, once again, the trust company to the east there, past Lewis, has a storage lot and they bring semis of trusses up there. And that's really broken up the intersection of Lewis and 34th Street North also. So I think what they're very concerned about is the kids being able to get to the park safely and to make sure that the traffic up there is reasonable for the road that's up there.
Thank you, Kenny.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, I will look for commission action on item number 14.
Madam Chair, I would like to recommend approval of the conditional use permit with the three stipulations. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Made in second, is there any further discussion on the item?
Oh gosh, yes.
I shouldn't have. Bring it on.
Well, whenever we come up here and we get a petition with a lot of the neighbors that are against something, that gets very sensitive to me anyway, these folks live in the neighborhood. I hope that, Bernie, I hope, I hope you're comfortable in the number of people that are going to be. are going to be there on a weekly basis. I've never been to one of their auctions. Obviously, this dealer was at one today. Looks like on a Wednesday morning, they're going to get 20 to 30 people there. Other than that, I think it's going to be kind of hit and miss during the week if people come to look in cars. So I felt kind of comfortable with that. I'd like to add a stipulation, that sighting that Eric presented to us today, I think, is awful, awful unique. It, it just has a good feel to it. I, I'd like to maybe add that stipulation to this. I'm going to support having that go up there with that, with that stipulation also added. I feel, feeling comfortable with Kenny saying he can control maybe some of the kids, you know, getting back and forth to the park.
Just, just to clarify for point of order is that you need to make a motion to amend the, the first motion with the added stipulation. And so then you need to do a second again and then vote and say you have two votes again.
Jesse will take care of all that for us when we get to it. David, before you sit down, this is the last time we'll look at this?
Well, you, yes, as planning commission. I mean, there is, there is an appeal process if, you know-
If, if it goes back.
Yeah, but that would go to city council.
But as far as getting it engineered, we won't look at that again.
No, you won't look at this again.
That'll be you guys in the engineering department.
Yep, yep. Be their grading permit, like Steve had, when they come forward for their site planning and their grading permit and building permits, that's-
Lights in a security system, I know security is an awfully big deal to these particular folks. We won't get a chance to look at that again, but you guys will?
Yeah, it would just be, they would need to be in conformance with city ordinances as far as lighting and security goes.
Okay. Before you make your stipulation, what, what was it or what are you?
That material that they use for the-
Oh, the, with the fence?
For, for, for the fencing.
How about anything, and I don't know how you do this in a stipulation, but to encourage the, the Van Epps exit. Do you have any thoughts on that?
I don't. I, they, there's a stipulation to submit a petition for improvements to Van Epps. I guess if the improvement were to be made, I, I don't know how you say, hey, guys, will you use that exit? How do you make them do that? Seemed to me that'd be an awfully, a way to get your trucks in and out, but I, I wouldn't know how to go about that.
Good.
I think other than say, having them say, hey, we'd, we'd agree to cooperate, I, I don't know how, what we could say to do that.
Okay.
Maybe Jesse does. Jesse, how do I add a stipulation to the-
Kenny, you would have to make a motion to amend the existing motion to add your item number four.
I would like to make a motion to the existing motion to add a fourth stipulation.
Are you going to be specific about what it is?
Well, I can't remember, what was it, David?
You could say fencing material as presented.
Fencing material as prevented, as presented by their engineer.
Durage, I mean, you can specify that, but as it was presented at the meeting, we can-
Okay. There's been a motion for a fourth stipulation. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Okay, so we vote on the amended?
I think the amended motion.
So, let's vote on the amended motion. All those in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, same sign? Okay. So the amended motion carries. Now we'll vote on the motion on item number 14.
Can we have further discussion first?
Sure.
I, I just would like to comment that I, there's no doubt from the comments that this is probably going to be a good neighbor, but I have some strong concerns about the traffic and the fact that the road doesn't appear to be the right road to have that amount of traffic and all those vehicles in and out. And I have a hard time supporting it because of that. So I just wanted it known that if I object, that's the only reason is the, the access issue.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? So I'll look for commission action on item night, number 14. All those in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
No, same sign?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number 15. Thank you, everybody, for item number 14. Give you a second to-
Item 15 is the 12th Street Campground. Planning Commission had seen this previously as a conversion to a campground and approved a portion of, of the subject property for that use and it has been done. This conditional use permit is for an expansion of that campground into an existing trailer or manufactured home park. West 12th Street Properties is the applicant, David Billion is the owner, and their intent is to convert the manufactured home park to a campground. And they would like to do this in phases. The applicant has provided a phasing plan that indicates conversion of different portions of the manufactured home park to campground. And the concern for having a phasing plan in place is that we are, by state law, not allowed to mix camp, camping units with manufactured home park placements. We've reviewed this initial plan and come up with a revised plan. I believe that's indicated in your addendum packet. It's also included on the screen before you. The applicant indicates that the green phase would be this year, the purple phase, phase two, and brown phase, phase three. The green phase is to include Site 58, also just north of Site 53, which shows a parking lot they want to put a motor home as a temporary use. We've reviewed the phasing plan concept with zoning. Their main concern is to keep the integrity of the manufactured home park. And so each one of these phases is going to have to be accompanied by a site plan that is approved through the approval process with building permit or change in use. And then the manufactured home park description is changed each time they do that. As long as that paperwork is consistent and continues to completion of the entire park, there shouldn't be a problem with that. But we've included that as a stipulation for, or a condition for approval. Along with the plan, the applicant has described improvements to the site, including cabins, playgrounds, restroom facilities that are typically found with campgrounds. Of course, the manufactured homes will maintain their own sewer water hookups until the conversion takes place. At that time, they, those hookups will also be available to the campers. There are no proximities to consider in the area. Generally, it conforms with the, is compatible with other uses in the area. A utility plan will be required for the conversion and camp sites are not allowed in the manufactured home park. This phasing plan then is flexible to the extent that the developer will be determining the extent of each phase at the time that they proceed. And again, we're okay with that as long as they come in and modify the paperwork for the existing park. So staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit with two conditions. One, that the applicant modify manufactured home park license for each phase of conversion to campground. The second one, that revise site plans for each section of the park addressing all conditional use permit standards for a campground be approved at the subject location. We receive no calls and that concludes staff report.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions for Steve? Okay. Is the petitioner here, please?
Good evening. I'm David Van Heuvlin. I'm the manager of West 12th Properties. My address, or the address of the business is 4501 West 12th Street. First, I'd like to thank the planning and zoning people. They've been a lot of help with putting this all together. And then if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Any questions for David? Okay. Thank you, David.
Okay, thank you.
Is anybody from the audience here to speak on this item? Okay. Seeing none, I'll look for commission action on item number 15.
Will for approval? With two stipulations.
I'll second.
Motion is second to approve item number 15 with two stipulations. All those in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, same sign. Item number 15 carries. Item number 16.
Good evening again. Item number 16 is a final development plan in Subarea D of the manifold acres plan development district to, to construct a convenience store with gas pumps. The site is about 1.8 acres in size and it's at the northeast corner of East 41st Street and South Sycamore Avenue. To the north is Subarea B of the manifold acres, which is a vacant parcel that is zoned for RA1 residential uses, which we assign a compatibility rating of three. To the southeast and west is all zoned or developed as commercial properties with, with a compatibility rating of five. The manifold acres plan development district was created by City Council Action in June of 1999 to allow for commercial office and multifamily development. And since that time, final development plans have been approved by the planning commission for multifamily residential and for assisted living centers. This is the first of the commercial development in the site. The comprehensive plan calls for mitigation of land use conflicts through the use of enhanced screening, buffering and/or burm-ing. Building materials are considered a component of effective conflict mitigation and the applicant has provided a brick and ephes facade on the entire building and has provided landscaping along, above the minimum requirements to effectively transition to the residential properties in the north and northeast. A neighborhood meeting, the applicant did hold a neighborhood meeting on Tuesday, February 22nd, and I believe that they told us it was about 20 to 25 and the neighbors showed up. And in general, the, our understanding is that the neighborhood was in agreement with the proposal, although I'd let them speak to that. And, but in general, the site conforms to all zoning and building requirements and because, and because of that, and it meets the subarea regulations, we are recommending approval of the final development plan with two conditions. The first is that the trash enclosure shall be constructed of building materials similar to that of the main building. And the second is that ash or ash varieties should not be used to be, to meet minimum tree planting requirements. And that concludes staff report.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions for Dave?
Did you say they had a neighborhood meeting? Why were they required to have a neighborhood meeting on this?
We always recommend that they hold neighborhood meetings. It's just our general policy is that we ask applicants to talk to their neighbors. So, and they were willing to do that and, and I believe that they were able to satisfy some of the neighborhood's questions.
I guess if, if it met the subarea regs and, and had the zoning, I, that's my only reason for asking that, Dave.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Dave? No? Thank you, Dave. Is the petitioner here, please?
Good evening. My name is Brian DePray. I am from Casey's General Store and I guess I will turn it back over to all of you if there's any questions that you have for me.
Any questions for Brian?
Brian, this looks an awful lot like, is it your store? Let's say it's Western and 69th Street?
Okay.
Is that?
I believe so, yes.
This would be look-
No, that's not a Casey's.
That's not a Casey's?
Yeah, actually, that's okay. We have, we have about-
Looking at the building, it looked like it.
We have, we have about seven, this would be our seventh store here in Sioux Falls. We've actually, since most of the buildings have gone up, we have now since changed, I guess, our, our fronts. It's, we've toned down the red. We don't have the big red awnings on it anymore. In fact, I've got some diagrams here of some similar stores, if you'd like to see them, but mostly a brick front. Some of the material's a little bit higher, it's more of a stucco painted. The trash, trash enclosure will be brick, aside from just a, just, just a wood gate front, so.
That's fine. Thank you, Brian.
Any other questions for Brian? Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Anybody from the audience here to speak?
Good evening. I'm Chuck Point with Broning Companies, 4401 East 6th Street. We're the developer of the neighborhood and I don't know if you have a overall picture of the, Steve, you can go back to. We're the developer of the neighborhood that this land sits on and the, and the land to the north and, and east. And I just want to say that we're so pleased to, to be here, to be able to work with people like Casey's because they have been very cooperative and, and I think they've presented an excellent plan for a convenience store in a neighborhood application. And two, we've sold the lots to the builder that has built every one of the twin homes in the private area to the north and east. And a representative of their twin home association is here this evening. And we've always had good communication with them throughout that whole process and we tried to provide them with all of the information that was available as early on as possible. We had what I'll call a preliminary neighborhood meeting in one of their living rooms with three or four active members of the association. And then we've tried to stay in communication with emails and other follow-up phone calls and they did have the neighborhood meeting that was alluded to and a lot of very constructive conversation there. I'll be here and if anyone has any questions about the neighborhood or anything that we can do to help, I'll be here and I'm glad to answer those questions.
Any questions to Chuck? Anybody else from the neighborhood here to speak on this?
My name is Clint Baldwin. I live at 3208 South Foxglove and we're just to the northeast of where the building is proposed. At our meeting with Casey's, it was a very good meeting and we think they'll be a very good neighbor. We had a couple of concerns or suggestions that we might, that we offered to them so that it would probably enhance the looking of the area, especially from the homes that are going to be built directly north of Casey's. There's a proposed to put a twin home or two twin homes and two, say, single homes in that area there and that would also be part of our association. And we were, one of our suggestions was to have a fence on the north side of the lot line and on the east side of the lot line to kind of separate the stuff. And then also on the north side to have a small berm, they are going to plant trees along there anyway, and play have a short berm, maybe a foot or so high. That isn't real high, but it's something that will give the trees a little height before the trees have a start, have a chance to really get tall, which would kind of shield Casey's from, from the people who are going to be living in those homes that the contractor will be building. And another thing, I don't know if it can be done, we mentioned it to him, possibly a city code, but the trash compact or the trash area is on the north side of the building, which would be south of where our homes would be. And if anybody has lived near a, any kind of where they pick up those big dumpsters in the morning, six o'clock, it does make an awful lot of noise. And we were thinking, possibly asking if it could be moved to the south side. They didn't know whether the city would allow that or not, but it's, it's a suggestion that we would like to have, have talked about. Other than that, we were pretty well happy with their plans. The building itself, I think, will be very nice looking and they've addressed all the drainage problems that were brought up at the meeting. So those are just a couple of things that we have asked them that they might do. We aren't saying they have to because they have the final say so anyway, but it's just some options that we would like to throw in. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Clint?
Thank you so much for coming this evening. It's nice to hear a neighborhood meeting going well.
We have two of them here. And this last meeting we had was the first one that I, was- was president of the association of, but we had a large turnout.
Good.
And everybody's pretty active, we all had something to say, but I didn't hear any very, I didn't hear any deconstructive comment.
Thank you. Anybody else? No? We'll look for commission action on item number sixteen.
I'll move for approval of item sixteen with the two separate conditions.
I'll second.
I'll second. And motion is seconded, all those, is there any further discussion?
Did we get a clarification on a couple of their ideas? Were they going to put a fence around this?
Around the north side and the east side? Brian, do you want to come back and?
That was a suggestion they'd like to see, did you guys agree to do that?
Well, we've discussed that, and certainly if it's a requirement. I think the one area to the north, certainly separating the future residential, I think that's something that's understandable. As I look to the property to the east, which will be future commercial, you know, short-term I can see perhaps, but most likely, there'll be another fence whenever the next commercial comes in there, so kind of negating the need for our fence, because that will now just be between two commercial properties. We'd obviously prefer not to put that fence up on that side, just, obviously, the added cost, but we can certainly understand the fence separation there between the residential. We discussed the berm, the spruce trees that we're going to put in there, I think, are at least of six-foot height, and, you know, growing patterns, I can't speak for, I'm not a horticulturist, but adding that berm, and I, we understood the idea of the height, but I think, based on the fact that it's going to be behind that fence, if we do construct a fence there, it's just going to be one area more, as far as issues of maintaining that landscaping. So, we think with those additional spruce trees that we're going to put in there, I think that'll be a good solid buffer there for the neighbors along, that if a fence is required, that we go ahead and put that there to the north side.
To the north side.
To the north side.
So you would agree to put a fence along the north side?
I think if that's required, again, separating the residential side, we would go ahead and do that, yeah. Normally, we don't, I mean, you know, obviously-
I thought the trees were going on the south side, but the trees are going to go on the north side?
Should be on the north side, it's the north side, correct?
Okay.
Yeah, the north side, it's the area kind of right there where the red is, so. So we've got that area where we've added more trees than what's shown on that diagram.
You don't want to move the garbage receptacle, I don't take it.
We prefer to always keep that, the receptacle on the other side away from the street side, and then we've got our loading area on the south side, where the trucks-
Do the fence and the trees, maybe that'd be a good compromise for keeping that over on that-
So the fence to the north side? Okay. We would agree to do that.
Do you want to make a motion to amend?
When we get done with discussion.
I'll just clarify, city ordinance would require the screening anyway, because of the parking lot adjacent to the residential use there. So by providing the trees, they're meeting the city ordinance requirement. So if you wanted a fence in addition to that, that's something you'd have to stipulate.
Any further discussion on item number sixteen?
I'd like to amend the motion. I would like to add a third stipulation. That they agreed to put a fence along that north edge.
Do we have a second for your motion to amend the motion? Better kick somebody under the table, Kenny.
It's going to die for a lack of a second.
Well, let's just hope Casey's is a good neighbor.
Okay.
So, Kenny's motion dies, for a lack of a second. We have a motion and a second to approve item number sixteen with the existing stipulations. I'll look for commission action on item number sixteen. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, same sign. Item number sixteen carries. Thank you. Item number seventeen.
Item number seventeen is a final development plan and minor amendments in sub area A of the Southern Hills Plan Development District to construct a convenience store with gas pumps and to allow one hundred and six and a half square foot, thirteen-foot-high sign, and to eliminate the requirement for pit drop. The applicant is Jeffrey Stein with Hy-Vee Incorporated, and the owner is Darryl Verk with MacArthur Square LLC. The area in question is just over one acre in size, and it's located at the southeast corner of East Fifty-First Street and South MacArthur Lane, budding zoning and land uses to the north. Across Fifty-First Street is the RD and O districts with office and two-family structures to assign a compatibility rating of three. To the south is sub area B of the Southern Hills Plan Development District with mixed-use tenant, multi-tenant office building. To the east is C4 Plan Commercial with a bank branch, and to the west is RA1 Residential with a multifamily apartment complex. The Southern Hills Plan Development District was created by city council action in April of two thousand and six. Final development plan for the mixed-use residential building was approved by the planning commission in July of two thousand and eight, and the subject site has been approved for a drive-through restaurant, but that approval has since expired. You may remember this application, or this applicant at least, in January twenty-eleven, the planning commission recommended approval of a major amendment to add gas dispensing station, and off sale alcohol has allowed land uses for this project. That petition was heard by the city council and approved on February seventh, and will become effective tomorrow. Those changes are reflected in the regulations included in your staff report. The, a couple items that I want to note on the review, the landscaping plan, the applicant has met the minimum requirements of the zoning ordinance for the number of trees to be installed, but has not yet provided a complete plan for the required screening on the west property line. Revised landscaping plan will be required to show landscaping utilized as screening from the residential property to the west. In addition, the applicant should present final landscape plans related to the BMP on the north, and those can be approved and reviewed by our office. On, regarding the signage, normally in the office district, freestanding signs should not exceed thirty-two square feet and six feet in height for lots with street frontage of a hundred feet or less, and forty-eight square feet and six feet in height for lots with street frontage exceeding a hundred and one square feet, exceeding a hundred and one feet in length. The applicant is proposing a freestanding multi-panel sign with electronic message board, thirteen feet high, and a hundred and six and a half square feet. The sign appears to be located in the BMP two feet below the level of the street at grade, giving it an effective visual height of eleven feet. The applicant should be prepared to explain at the public hearing why more than forty-eight square feet of signage is needed. In this case, I can allude to that, given that they're trying to combine two different signs onto the one sign that would serve both the multi-tenant building behind it and then the Hy-Vee gas station as well. The subject property and land use, and on the analysis, the subject property is surrounded by apartments to the west and mixed-use development to the south. Those two uses serve as effective land use transitions when moving from commercial land uses to single or two-family residential uses. To the north, or two-family residential structures transitioning to single-family residential further to the north, compatibility concerns are present when placing commercial land uses across an arterial from low-density residential uses, but those concerns can be mitigated by effective landscaping, muted signage, or other practices to minimize land use impacts. The planning commission, just to note, and on past approvals, the planning commission has approved a minor amendment with the previous final development plan that allowed the restaurant to have a flat roof design, similar to what Hy-Vee is proposing at this time. And in addition, the applicant is requesting an increase in the size of monument sign, as well as an electronic message sign, and the applicant, as I noted, should be prepared to address that request. Staff is recommending, because the subject application generally conforms to the shape Sioux Falls twenty thirty-five campers to plan, and complements existing commercial development on the Fifty-First and Cliff Avenue intersections, staff is recommending approval of the final development plan with three stipulations. First is that a revised landscaping plan be submitted to our office for approval, reflecting compliance with the sub area regulations. Number two, no ash or ash varieties be utilized to meet minimum landscaping requirements. And number three, the trash enclosure constructed of similar building material to that of the main building, and the applicant provided us with that photo of what they intend to build, which meets that stipulation today, so. And as far as I know, the applicant did hold neighborhood meetings during the phase of the major amendment, so they did not hold one at this, for the final development plan, and we received no phone calls at either stage of the development process. And that concludes staff report.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions for Dave? Okay, is the petitioner here, please?
Good evening, my name is Jeff Stein with Hy-Vee, and first I'd like to thank David and city staff for working with us through this process and for the recommendation for approval. Second, I'd just like to address the conditions placed on it, one, the three conditions, and we have no objections of those conditions. And then lastly, just to reiterate with regards to the signage, that was, like David said, to combine the two signs into one, is the purpose for the request for the additional signage area. And it does, I don't know if you've been past that area, it does sit down kind of in the detention facility, so the height of the sign is not, you know, obviously thirteen feet, it's going to be much less, so. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
What can you do about getting gas back down to two ninety-one?
I'd love to.
If you're wondering if we could stipulate that that-
Yeah, yes. We stipulate that that-
That one I can agree to.
I'm cheering. No, go ahead, I'll be after you. I have had a concern about your hours of operation. Can you tell us here tonight what your intention is, as far as your hours of operation?
Yeah, the food store is open twenty-four hours. Now, this facility typically, and it is a little bit independent, up to the store director running that facility, but typically, it's from five AM to eleven PM, and then we have the pumps on for the card reader for twenty-four-hour self-service at the pumps.
Can you understand my concern for that being adjacent to single-family properties?
Yes, I can appreciate-
How that might affect-
Yeah, is it from a lighting standpoint? As far as the lighting standpoint, we are set back sixty feet from the road because of the detention facility. That is a pretty good-sized buffer in this situation. It is all downcast, full cutoff fixtures in the lighting.
In PDs, we, in the past, we've taken typically, in all cases, but a lot of cases have set the time limit from early in the morning till eleven o'clock at night. And I don't know how the rest of the commissioners might or might not feel about that, I'm just trying to get a feel from you as to-
We would appreciate the opportunity to keep the self-service open twenty-four hours. You know, if you are driving around at that hour of the, you know, of the day, and you need gas, there are not too many facilities-
So that gives some of the ability to drive in there with a charge card?
Right.
Charge, but it's not an open store type?
Correct.
I'm not sure, Kenny, but I think that the convenience store just kitty-corner across the street is open twenty-four hours.
You know, that was originally done, we had a little talk about this at our informational hearing, that was done under a PD, and that, their hours were eleven o'clock. We then took the PD off of it, which then gave them the right to keep it open. I honestly didn't know if they were open all night now or not, or if they were still closing at eleven.
I think they are, I think they are. But I just, I don't see an issue with that, with this location, sitting right on Fifty-First Street. If it were further back in a, more of a residential neighborhood area, I guess I, you know, I might question it, but.
I think it's probably, in my thought, a little bit more of a precedent-type of a situation. We've got a C4 next to, single-family and across the street from, and, you know, we haven't had any neighbors come up, they told me they've had a neighborhood meeting. I'm curious that the neighbors, if that was discussed, whether you, your hours of operation?
No, I don't recall that coming up in the conversation, no. We did have two meetings, and at the second meeting, we only had four residents, you know, show up and-
If I'm not mistaken, your gas operation over on Twenty-Sixth and Sycamore is open all night, isn't it?
I don't know, it could very well be.
That's the one I drive by all the time, I'm pretty sure it is. I just think with this location, I don't see an issue with that at all.
Okay.
I have two questions. The plan is to close the Cliff Avenue side and get rid of the canopy over there, and that won't be any-
Correct, yeah, it'd be move the entire facility, essentially.
So it won't be any pumps or anything?
Correct, correct. And then that would just be used, it'd be parked out for, parking for the food store.
Will the building stay?
No.
The building's going to go to?
Yeah.
The other question is, the BMP, I can't tell from the drawing here, but will that be a water feature, or pond, or?
No.
What is your plan with that?
It's currently designed to hold about two and a half feet of water in the bottom of it. Now, again, it is down about six, it's six or seven feet below the adjacent grade, so it's not going to be a feature that you're going to see as you drive by, or it's not going to be, you know, a fountain or something like that, as I believe has been depicted in the past.
Yeah, I would encourage you to do that, it would just-
Yeah.
Help the aesthetics of that area if you could incorporate that in, into your plan.
It's a bit of a challenge with the, you know, level of water, and then when you have the storm event, it fills up the pond, you know, to have that feature in there. It is the intent to have a permanent water pool in there, though.
Any other questions for Jeff? Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Anybody from the audience here to speak to this item? Good, let's, I'll look for commission action on item number seventeen.
I'll move for approval of item seventeen with the three conditions recommended.
Okay? Is there a second? I second it. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. Item number seventeen carries. Item number eighteen.
Thank you, Jeffrey Schmidt, representing planning staff on this item. This is a request to amend the zoning ordinance in multiple sections to revise the public hearing standards and the fees throughout the zoning ordinance. Within the zoning ordinance, there's a process regarding the public hearing standards for development applications that are heard in front of the planning commission, as well as the city council. This process currently includes the public notice, the hearing, the action, and the protest. Now, what we're trying to do in this proposal is specifically to address consistency, as well as to add some features to add additional public hearing process to this. So what we've done is we're adding written notification to be mailed out by Connie Hinckley, mailed out by the city of Sioux Falls, she just missed that totally, written out by the city of Sioux Falls to adjacent property owners prior to notification. So if anybody's home right now watching this, and I know we don't have a money people in the audience, that's a new feature that we're adding to this. So, fees will be raised fifty dollars for each one of these application processes to cover the cost of the mailing. As I've looked at this, you have the cost of the stamp, the envelope, the letterhead, and then again, the administrative cost to put together the addresses, to address the letters, to put that all together, so that's the, basically, a dollar per piece of letter to send out, so that's the fifty dollars that we're looking to recoup. So, as you look at the changes that we're proposing to go forward here, we've had, I think, just shy of ten public meetings on this, we had five public meetings with stakeholders, we had two land use committee meetings with the city council on this to kind of propose it, propose it, and there is support from some of the citizens, there's some neutral aspect, and then there's some written comments from some existing organizations in the city of Sioux Falls that want to be known that the process as it is right now addresses the issues. There isn't a need to require additional notification, and that's what they're here tonight to state, that should you really require additional requirements? Even tonight, you saw that, is it a requirement to have public meetings? No, but people went above and beyond and did that, but do you need to make it a requirement to have to do that? You can still do written notifications, send it out, but does it have to be a written notice? So that's some of the concerns I've heard about making this a standard by law. So as you see the changes that we have in here, it's in the development applications for rezonings, conditional uses, major amendments, and final development plans, that you would have to post signs at the property, written notification within three hundred feet, publication in the legal notice in the newspaper, and again, the last issue is that failure to provide actual notice to each person within this doesn't automatically mean that you didn't commit, follow all the obligations that were put forward in the ordinance. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions. Thank you.
I have a question for you, Jeff.
Yes, ma'am.
So as a property owner or future- So, as a property owner or future petitioner, really, the city takes all the responsibility off of my back and puts it on their back for notification with regard to postal notification.
Postal notification, correct.
I have to put the signs up and I have to put an ad in the paper.
City of Sioux Falls puts the ad in the paper. City of Sioux Falls will send out the written notification. The applicant has to post the four signs at the property.
So, for fifty dollars, you're gonna put the ad in the Argus and mail out however many letters I need? Or whatever paper would be applicable?
There's already an existing application fee. We're adding an additional fifty dollars to cover the, the mailing cost.
Okay. Well, there, we know that time after time, if there is an item of controversy, inevitably there is a member of the audience who comes forward that feels that there was not proper notification.
Right.
So, I think the fact that you have involved stakeholders and put it out to a broader audience shows us that we are listening and we want some flexibility, but also that we're listening to the-
Okay. Thank you.
Residents, thank you. Any, any other questions of Jeff? Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Sir, I'm guessing you're here to talk about this item.
Yes.
Please come forward.
Todd Anowski with the Home Builders Association of the Sioux Empire, which is located at sixty-nine oh four South Lynncrest Place here in Sioux Falls. Madam Chair and members of the commission, as indicated in the, in the Planning Commission staff report, and as Jeff alluded to, our association has come out against the proposed revision in the ordinance. As Jeff said, we believe that the current process works appropriately. And we did participate in the stakeholder meetings, as did representatives from our industry. And I guess, so, once we discuss the issue a little bit more, as, 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 as the commission is as well, again, we, we thought the process works adequately. The real question may be from a specific project. There may be questions from nearby property owners that might disagree with the project, but the fact that they're calling the planning office or coming down to the Planning Commission meeting serves the purpose that they were adequately notified. And I guess, from just that experience, again, we believe that the existing ordinance works and there's really no need to, to, to change the ordinance. One question that came up at one of our stakeholder meetings was the nature of controversial projects, and I, I believe Jeff put together a list that covered the last two and a half years or three years. And planning had reviewed two hundred and five rezones, major amendments. Of those, five became issues. Break that down into a percent, that was two point four percent, a very small amount. When you look at conditional uses over that same time period, it was two hundred and thirty-six of conditional uses, of which seven became controversial. Again, that would equate to a two point nine percent. So, very limited number of, of circumstances that were debatable, that, that the public had maybe some issues with, which again goes to our point that we would argue that, again, that the process is working. So, that was just one of the questions that we had. Likewise, if an individual comes down and raises question, questions, the Planning Commission can always ask for deferral and capture additional information. So, keep that in mind. Finally, the only other question that we really had was just the cost to implement. Jeff mentioned, you know, the fifty-dollar increase in the, in the application fee, but, you know, behind the scenes, it's, it's gonna take staff time to find the surrounding property orders within the appropriate distance to, to mail out the letter. We, we just had questioned the additional cost of the ordinance by the city for that aspect. So, those are just some of our questions that we had on, on the ordinance, and again, thought the current process worked adequately.
Thank you. Any questions for Todd? Todd, I, I have a couple things for you. I, I can tell you sometimes when, when an item is, as you said, controversial, and you say, well, they show up here, so the process must have worked. Well, sometimes their notification process is their neighbor. And so then, they often feel that the notification process doesn't work. And so that's why we're even here, is because we have, time and time again, people come back and say the notification process didn't work. So, yes, we're talking about a small percentage of, of actual petitioners, but this is their only avenue to be heard. And this is the open process, and I think in order to keep that, the, the opportunity for them to be heard and recognized, and just as you saw here tonight, I think the, that people appreciate the opportunity of voicing their concerns. It allows them to maybe work some things out that they couldn't get worked out before. But in, in order of transparency, I, I think if we can show the stakeholders in the city of Sioux Falls that we've listened to their concerns, and really, I, I would question whether somebody in the home builders, and being a former member of the association myself, if we could have done it for fifty dollars, what the city is proposing to do. So, though I can appreciate the position that the home builders is taking, I think that in order for us to respond to those who have raised a concern, that this is a step in the right direction.
We, we certainly understand those instances likewise. I mean, you have a sign posted on the property and a snowfall event comes and the wind blows down the sign and, you know, there's, there's always different circumstances that occur. And again, it's just, it's just sometimes difficult to, to please everyone, but I certainly understand your, what your comments are indicating as well.
Well, we know we aren't gonna please everybody. Thank you.
Doesn't look like anybody else is here to talk, so do we have commission action on item number eighteen?
Madam Chair?
I, I guess we want approval. So, we want a motion for approval?
That would be the-
Okay. I would make a motion for approval.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Any discussion? Okay, well, all those in favor of item number eighteen signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, same sign. Item number eighteen carries. I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll move for adjournment. A second.
All those in favor? Yes. Thank you. Have a good night.